Yeah, it's in there. It's in the rest of the...
Yeah, this corner next to the highway?
Yes, about.
Pretty dirty.
I want to hear it. I've learned if you go into a rally hall and you stop and listen.
Stop and listen. See the corner?
Yes. That's what they did. But I want to hear them make the corner. And that makes it a lot smoother and smoother.
Yeah. The way it carries, the corner, the dirt stops.
It is.
Celebrate the car.
You know where I got it?
Get pairs of goggles. Trash truck?
Oh, yes. Yep.
Couple mail, couple clearly, some prints.
Yeah. What was the trash truck moving? I don't know what that...
Yeah.
No pressure, please.
We get... Look at my side of this guy. Lodge Bill is putting up a lot of people in here. You know, anybody like to buy a lot?
Do you know?
I like, I like to go out there. It's been pretty busy. It's not very clear. It's not very...
No pressure, please.
We get... Look at my side of this guy. Lodge Bill is putting up a lot of people in here. You know, anybody like to buy a lot?
Do you know?
I like, I like to go out there. It's been pretty busy. It's been pretty busy. It's not very clear.
He's got a glare up his face.
Hey! They're asking him to come down. He's funny to make Johnson's face.
He's saying, "Oh, yeah."
I got no... You got one?
Yep.
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I already blew one of them. 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 Sorry, I invited everybody. Funny, I read that it's going in here. I just, I'm just looking at the fingers, I don't want to set it. It's looking like the manager.
There you go.
Everybody will set the bathroom. Bonjour. I won't act forward. Let's go, we nobody will set the bathroom. With you?
No.
Right here? You can be on together, kind of like this, okay, for your person.
Sometimes.
It's great to like...
In this room over here, guys.
I can't do it. I can't do it. It's got a glare up his face. Hey! They're asking him to come down. He's funny to make Johnson's face. Okay, where going?
Good morning, welcome to Young County courtroom and Young County Commissioners Court. This meeting's a called meeting Monday, October 31st, 2016. It's 8:34 a.m. Make note that the meeting was posted and published in the manner for the time required and that all members of the court are present. If it's convenient, if you will, please stand for any place. Pray with me. Our dear most precious Father in heaven, we thank you for many blessings that you bring to us, we're grateful for this country and this nation as it is a nation that is operated and ran and directed by its people. We have a government that we elect. We have provisions for appointments. We ask your blessings upon those, all of those elected officials, appointed officials that lead our county, our state, and our nation. We ask your blessings upon this meeting. We ask your blessings upon those who stand in harm's way, that protect all of the rights and freedoms we come to love. We ask that you go with us, forgive us for many shortcomings, as we know that you will, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor to this flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one nation under God, indivisible.
Thank you very much. Please. Okay, out of number three, Travis Babcock, you'll please step up here. Stand right there, Dr. Lick, right there. Right here. Right here. Okay, we're here this evening, or this morning for the swearing in of the elected official, Young County Sheriff. Due to the retirement of our previous sheriff, Brian Walls, whose resignation takes effect this day, and we're going to swear in Travis Babcock to fill that unexpired term. In accordance with Article 16, Section 1A, Texas Constitution, in the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, I allow Travis to administer the oath of office if you will plead that complaint. I, Robert Travis Babcock...
I, Robert Travis Babcock...
Do solemnly swear affirm...
Do solemnly swear affirm...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
Of the office of Young County Sheriff...
Of the office of Young County Sheriff...
Of the State of Texas...
Of the State of Texas...
And will do the best of my ability to preserve, protect, and defend...
Will do the best to preserve, protect, and defend...
The Constitution and the laws...
Constitution and the laws...
Of the United States and this state...
Of the United States and this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congrats, ladies.
Thanks, sir.
(applause) Also, I have here, Mariana, a certificate of appointment because collectively Commissioners Court of Young County, and I, as the presiding officer, present this to you. It says Commissioners Court of Young County, and then it names Mike Sykes, Matt Pruitt, Stacy Rogers, Jimmy Wiley. This is a certificate of appointment pursuant to the Texas Local Government Code, Section 87.041. Commissioners Court of Young County, Texas hereby appoints Travis Babcock as certified peace officer as sheriff of Young County, Texas, and to be effective on the 31st day of October 2016, and then to fill the unexpired term ending at bed night December 31st, 2016. Issued this 31st day of October 2016 by the presiding officer of Young County Commissioners Court. Congratulations, Mr. Sheriff. (applause) See on that note, it needs to be recorded. Well, I don't know which ones you need to record. I'm going to see them both. One of them needs to be recorded with the county clerk, needs to be kept on file there, and you need to keep copy of that in your files, along with your... Make note that Travis has previously signed his constitutional statement, which is better known as the anti-ribery statement. He did that last week. It'll be on file with the clerk, and you'll have file of his records.
What do you mean, that's for... Take the last frame off. Hey, I do want to thank everybody for coming this morning. Everybody knows we have a pretty good job ahead of us, and I think the people we got right here today, we're going to do all right, we're going to make it work. Like I said, it's just going to take time, and today we're going to start this going in the right direction. Thank you.
(applause)
Mike, can you get a picture of him?
Sure.
This guy.
I'm going to picture Commissioner Cole. You, babe. (inaudible). Where's go there?
I still try to raise this gun.
Now, get back to the wall. Nobody want to stay?
Yeah. You think better, so you're pretty wide.
Reminds me of that, every time.
I went more than that, too. It's a young woman. Ask her, she knows who the sheriff is. Yeah. I'm the sheriff, brother. You should have gone to say, "Mr. Sheriff's," he's tomorrow morning. We got to go. You got blue pickets?
I was told he was getting detailed.
Detail, clean up for you. You're not there. The details come in, but...
Detail is inmates doing, that's our detail.
No, actually, they put it somewhere.
Oh, really?
And long where I'm at.
What's your name?
I can't imagine.
Man, that's more money for their money back there.
Okay.
Something about that, that day, you know, New Year's Day and all that stuff, you know, it draws me to it.
It does. And you forget it.
Wow! Wow!
After this grand swearing of new sheriff, we have out of number four, consider county clerk, in its previous meeting, October 24th. There was, there was an error, as it was distributed to commissioners and in the package, but it had been corrected, so I think it was strictly a name spelling. All everything, the motion.
So, look.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Sykes. Do we accept amendments as presented? All in favor?
Aye.
Carry it. Out of number five, consider budget amendments. Do you think vouchers?
I have vouchers, always have voucher.
No amendments?
No, sir.
Good.
And I have some 2016 vouchers first. We paid those Zach Burton bills for September out of your 16 budget. So, the total on that is 109,618.16. And of that, 24,684.34 was out of the general. And then I have the 17 vouchers, for a total of 64,871.17. And of that, 31,105.99 is out of the general. And I think we just have maybe another bill or two, the courthouse repair bill that we're going to take out of 16, and maybe something else we think, but we're nearly done hanging out of 16.
Second voucher. Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Pruitt, and second by Commissioner Rogers to approve vouchers payable as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry it. Five, over. Okay, out of number six, this is, I think I have that in, just a map, it's about all I've got in the packet, but it's New Century Veterans Memorial Committee, and they're requesting a location on courthouse lawn for the establishment of, I guess you'd say, a brand-new memorial, New Century Memorial, to run in conjunction with the veterans memorial that we have. We've got Regan McCollum here to agree if you'll come on us, Knox Bishop, and our BSO officer, Wiley. Ms. May.
Thank you all for hearing us this morning. I talked to Judge Bullock in the spring about what we were looking at doing, and began to put together a committee then. I've got some fine veterans, everybody up in the committee except myself are veterans. And we've been hard at work, and we are asking permission to be able to put this monument that you see, I think you have that on your computer, the sketch of where it can go on the courthouse lawn?
Well, we've got it here in the packet with us.
Okay.
It's not as pretty as the lawn, it didn't come out in color. You didn't have to get one?
Let's see, I'll probably put that here. So, you can see that we're at the present memorial, if you're looking at present memorial, you're looking dead in the middle of that, there's two sides to that. Go to the left, if you're facing from the east, and look across that sidewalk about, I believe it's about six feet back, and it will look like, it will be exactly like one panel, one wall of that.
Like an natural extension of it.
It's going to have...
Right off the end of this building, ready to serve.
Yes. The same brand, it, same company's going to do it, same height, same style.
And what, exactly who will be going on this? Okay, you got a list of everybody who's going to be eligible for that?
We're collecting DD214s. We will start at, after your approval, we will begin the announcement for the press release in paper, we're shooting Veterans Day for the, the knowledge of this on the public's behalf, and then United says they'll work with us and sponsor a Hot Dogs for Veterans, so Veterans Day, we'll do it at United because of time, brands, logistics. At that time, we're presently still, we have two options now, to go under as the umbrella, and that is the Graham Community Foundation invited us to come under them, but also, we've been talking with David Nolan, and there's a good possibility, I think, that we'll come under the American Legion, which is what this one was done under. And, you know, that's one of the charters of the American Legion, is memorials and remembrance of veterans, et cetera, so that's a perfect match. So, we're still, the reason that's, it's not all tied up already, is because I'm talking with David, he has, the charter is still alive, they have 14 members on the road, but they do not have their tax exempt status, the sales tax. And when you're building $100,000, I have a sales tax to bring in for it. So, we're, I'm working with him, and I don't think it will be much problem to get that reinstated with the study.
Just your currency, re-currency, it's not going to do that.
Hope not.
Plus, reactivate it.
Reactivate it, pretty much. Yes, so once that's done, then we will be ready for an official fundraiser to start.
That, that thing for the purpose of tax rate contributions to the...
Right.
That will...
Right, that's the reason we go under one, rather than trying to establish another foundation.
Plus money will be spent out of there, and without a tax number, you're going to be taxing.
One little, one item that we're going to have to get clear on is we just put some new roof drains in, and those roof drains are routed very near where this is going to sit, not even overlap on one end. Now, there may be a possibility there that we might have to reroute those, depending on how far this comes.
When you all were, when we were digging the trenches for those drains, you know, we went out there and looked at it, and it looks like it's going to be within about distance of me, about right here, right there.
Oh, wow.
I don't know if it's going to be too close to the drain because of weight of the, of the, or anything.
Well, as long as, those drains aren't very deep to the ground, so if, you know, if it came across there, that's going to have to be rerouted in some way, because of the foundation in the ground.
If you go just at 36, 40 inches, it should be okay.
But...
It might have to modify it.
Hopefully, yeah. Hopefully, it could be arranged to where there won't be any interference, it doesn't matter really how close it gets, it doesn't get by the...
Or disrupt your money, the tax rate, or...
Digging drains.
Right, yeah, that'd be pretty, pretty tough, I've got pieces, money, yeah. Money, and get through it. And we do have an account set up at Interbank right now, in case somebody wants to give some money, or, you know, Hot Dog Day is free to veterans, we'll put a jar out for donations, if somebody else wants to come by and get a hot dog, get a hot dog donation. It's set up as, in my name and Larry Hamilton's name. Larry Hamilton is the vice chair, and we have set up a joint account, has the first time I've ever had a joint account, somebody besides him. So, it's under both of our social security numbers, and the first donation, I consider, has been made to the Veterans Committee, and $50 is in that account, opening that account.
What's the name of the account?
DBA as New Veterans Memorial Project, New Century Veterans Memorial Project.
So, the good news is we're not accepting donations.
That's right, we got a DBA for that, that once we get under it, the American Legion, hopefully, if not the Grant Foundation, that money, that would troll in and they'll change it. It happens at the American Legion accounts at Interbank, too.
Do you do, if everyone is, is now, talk about it over there, so he can get that in the paper for you?
I will, and in fact, I have to go by and I was going to sit by at the point of time of that.
You're going to have a hot dog fundraiser kind of thing on there, appreciation?
Right, it's going to be Hot Dog for Veterans, you know?
And that's where is that?
Hot Dog for Veterans.
Hot Dog for Veterans. It's going to be at the west end of United, you know where they do the Hatch Chili's, so...
So, it will be at United?
Yeah.
And that will...
It'd be nice to be, be over here, but the logistics of doing that this time is...
And that's going to be on Veterans Day?
On Veterans Day.
For long?
Yeah, it'll be about 11:30, it's ready, and a lot of the members of the committee will be doing that. So, we have Larry Hamilton, Knox Bishop, Larry Hamilton, Dan De La Cruz, William Highsmith, Mary Hyatt, and Steve Bristow, and Doran Holm, acting advisors.
Okay, what, what's the cause pleasure on this side?
I think, logically, if it works, I think we need to make sure it's going to work for everybody, but I think it's a great idea, I think it's very needed, and I think the longstanding tradition of the American Legion on the square in Graham, Texas, I would really, or try to get that to work. And thank United Supermarkets for their help. I would move that we allow this project to move forward.
A second, Dan. We have a motion, a second, to allow dedicated location, respective dedicated location for the New Century Veterans Memorial Monument, if you'd be with me, on our east lawn of courthouse, at a specific location. Motion by Commissioner Sykes, second by Commissioner Wiley. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry it. Five, zero. No opposition.
Thank you, guys.
So, gentlemen, you've got your first step.
Thank you.
Anybody that did discuss anything about a burning ban, burning friction?
It'll rain windy.
Yeah. You've got three days' prediction in the 10-day forecast, maybe we are anguular weather.
I didn't feel away about two and a half, three weeks before we have our next meeting, so there's probably a pretty full agenda.
Well, before we adjourn, someone needs to discuss the fourth, how we're going to finish the fence. Y'all want to start that next week, wait and see how the rain does things?
It'll be good.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I do, let's just do it next week, we got to win it.
Start Monday?
Let's get it right.
Monday.
Say when the rain does, but, yeah, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, I mean, if it rains really good, I'll...
Let's schedule it for a rain.
Next Monday, and I think y'all want it, too, because it's been a while.
We were just planning on Monday, and if it rains, we'll drag.
It's like, let's schedule for a rain.
Well, yeah, I would say, it's been on the books for about a year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a good thing, you know, there hasn't been any cattle in there since we've done the first two sides.
Have there not?
No, there's been pigs.
Pigs have been there now.
That might be something that might need to be addressed, so...
Did you see cattle pound around the place that night?
Or some hog panels.
How about a hog trap?
No, what? You can't catch a mouse.
We will start at, after your approval, we will begin the announcement, we'll put press lists in the paper, we're shooting Veterans Day for the, the knowledge of this on the public's behalf, and then United says they'll work with us and sponsor a hot dog for veterans, so Veterans Day, we'll do it at United because of timeframe and logistics. At that time, we're presently still, we have two options now to go under as the umbrella, and that is the Graham Community Foundation invited us to come under them, but also, we've been talking with David Nolan, and there's a good possibility, I think, that we'll come under the American Legion, which is what this one was done on. And, you know, that's one of the charters of the American Legion is memorials and remembrance of veterans, et cetera, so that's a perfect match. So we're still, the reason that's, it's not all tied up already is because I'm talking with David, he has, the charter is still alive, they have 14 members on the roll, but they do not have their tax consent status, the sales tax. And when you're building $100,000, buying the sales tax is pretty important. So we're, I'm working with him, and I don't think it will be much problem to get that reinstated with the state.
Is your currency a recurrence? It's not a recurrence.
Hopeful.
Plus reactivated.
Reactivated, pretty much. Yeah, so once that's done, then we will be ready for an official fundraiser to start.
That, that thing for the purpose of tax rate contributions to the...
Yeah, right. Right. That's the reason we go under one, rather than trying to establish another foundation.
Plus money will be spent out of there, and without a tax number, it could be taken.
Right.
One little, one item that we're gonna have to get clear on is we just put some new drift drains in, and those drift drains are routed, we're very near where this is gonna set it, not even overlap on one end. Now, there might be a possibility there that we might have to reroute those, depending on how far over this comes.
When y'all were, when we were digging the trenches for those drains, you know, we would have looked at it, and it looks like it's gonna be within about distance of me and about right here, right there.
Oh, wow.
I don't know if it's gonna be too close to the drain, because of weight of the, of the reason.
Well, as long as, those drains aren't very deep to the ground, so if, you know, if it came across there, then it's gonna have to be rerouted in some way, we call it a foundation.
If you go to, say, 36 inches, it should be okay.
But it could be arranged to where there won't be interference, it doesn't matter really how close it gets, it doesn't get by the law.
They'll just run your money in the taxpayer with digging drains.
Right, yeah, that'd be pretty, pretty tough on both pieces, money and getting through it. And we do have an account set up at Interbank right now, in case somebody wants to give some money, or, you know, Hot Dog Day is free to veterans, we'll put a jar out for donations if somebody else wants to come by and get a hot dog, get a hot dog donation. It's set up as, in my name and Larry Hamilton's name. Larry Hamilton is the vice chair, and we have set up a joint account, it's the first[1376.12]